Are you able to change your name forty seven WM one Q? Or if you could state your name?
Oh, hi, Tessa. I'm I'm changing my name now.
Okay, thanks, Deacon.
Forty seven WM one Q doesn't isn't what I go by.
That's good. It's a little hard to say.
You sound like a pr- sound like a prisoner.
Oh. It's worth thinking robot, but okay.
Yeah. There we go. I think we're all together now. How are you doing?
Good. I actually have three meetings this week, as it turns out.
Well, no.
Trying to get organized for the next one is the ZBI. So I was trying to get organized for that.
Which what are they doing?
Two. They're busy. So they have two cases open right now and a third one submitted. So it's I I don't know if you've heard thirty two Lake Drive has a rebuild, tear down, rebuild and a nonconforming structure. So these they're all three are special permits. And then on eighty Shore Drive, there's a there's a proposed shed being built within the frontage setback. And then the latest one is also a tear down rebuild on what is it sixteen Myola Drive?
Yeah. Interesting.
Busy.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm learning.
Yeah, yeah. I like the narrative in the minutes. It's it's it flows a lot better.
Okay, they still were long. I will we'll discuss it once everyone's here, but I I cut off. You wouldn't. You might not be able to tell, but I cut out like one of them, I cut out two pages worth of of text and then another one I cut out a page and a half. So.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's hard taking minutes. It really is.
So, yeah, I mean, I could. And I had my husband read the longest one to see if he could see anything that could be cut out further. But so I guess it'll be to the board to decide if if it makes sense to trim it even more if it would be just like this was discussed rather than like details on what was discussed. But yeah, we'll have to see once everyone's here.
Yeah. Well, Michael's here.
Yeah.
Miriam's here.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Miriam.
Good evening. Oh, I should change my name.
Host is good.
Host is here.
I think Michael's trying to talk.
I was. I didn't realize I was muted. I had all these witty comments. Oh, well.
Hey, Michael, you weren't able to find what you were looking for in that document?
No.
I will try to find it for you.
Yeah, I I read it and read it and read it.
Okay, it's in there. Somewhere.
I'm I'm I know I've read it before.
Yeah, it's like on the last page.
Hey, Tessa, I sent everyone an email. Well, I guess I could share my screen if it comes up. Don't worry about it.
Do. Okay, I can get it open. That would help.
I'm always nice to have someone else share the screen, I gotta say.
Is it a doc? Is it? I mean, I can get it open. Is it? Or the email email itself?
Yeah, just the email. I thought I'd make it easy.
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah.
It's redacted. It's not
That's what I thought.
Not available to the public.
But it used to be.
I don't think so.
I know I read it somewhere, somewhere.
Okay. Yep.
I found it. So when we get to the associate member.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I was saying before that you couldn't hear me. I love the minutes. They were great.
All right. So we'll. Yeah, we'll see what the full opinion is once Jeff is able to join us.
Well, and others.
And Linda. So, yeah, we have Linda at this point. Yeah. Sorry, my mind. I've been doing ZBA stuff. So like my mind was on that set of people. And I think because of Jeff being on the on both.
Yeah, we're still we're still shy of Quorum.
Yes.
And we're a little bit early or by Mike.
Just seven now. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there's Jeff. My guess is once Jeff's once Jeff's in, we'll have Quorum and we can start.
Jeff, if you want on mute, then oh, and we have Nathan Murphy joining too.
Oh, good, good. We'll wait for him.
I think you're gonna get me for the whole meeting, Deacon.
Good, good, good.
So let's make it quick.
You'd let us toil without you, but so are you? Are you? Is Nathan all in?
Yep. And and Robert Raymond's also just joined. So.
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just missing Steve, right?
Yes, that's that's my understanding, too.
Tessa, were there minutes out there someplace?
Oh, Jeff.
Them on Friday.
Huh?
I sent them on Friday. Not I didn't send them out. I mean, that can be part of the discussion. If it's helpful to me to resend them the day of, I can make sure to do that in the future.
It always helps me because I lose everything. It just goes into the hole and 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 my chronic problem is not being able to find things that were sent like appropriately in advance.
That's fine. I can make sure to do that in the future and resend things the day of. Okay, that's fine.
So I like them in advance.
So are you in as much as you're gonna be, Robert?
He's muted.
Yeah.
There he is.
Hi, Robert. Well, I'll I'll open the meeting. And I'll ask first for for public comment. Is there anybody who wants to talk about anything right at the get go other than the agenda? Let's
We do the statement, the the governor's restriction statement.
Oh, shit.
I have it in front of me if it would be easier.
Yeah, yeah. If you could do that, that I'm sorry, I forgot.
No, that's that's fine. I do it for Concom. So I have it right here.
Excellent.
All right, following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation only. The public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real time access, the public can request request a recording of this meeting by contacting the town clerk.
That was official.
Okay, so so Miriam, did you have some comment?
Um, well, I just want to follow up on the email and explain that, you know, the historical commission is interested in possibly getting a license for ArcGIS mapping and are interested in whether other town committees would have an interest. And we were looking at, we're going to explore some different ways to do it, but we're thinking the Concom and possibly Planning Board might be interested. So.
Kevin Kevin has raised his hand.
Oh, Kevin may have it.
You're muted, Kevin.
Kevin's muted.
Sorry, the Board of Assessors has a license already.
Oh, can you share it with other town committees?
No. It's a single user license that we purchased to work with our software.
Yeah, that doesn't help.
How much did it cost?
Uh, it was discounted for the first year. So for the for the first year, which will run out. I believe at the end of May, it was zero.
Zero.
Do you know what it will be for the following year?
About two or $300.
Oh, that's cheap.
Use a license.
Did you get it through Furcog?
No, the International Association of Assessing Officers in ArcGIS struck up a deal that any assessing office that did not have it before could get a single user license for free for a year. So we grabbed it.
Do you know? Is there a multi-user discount afterwards?
There is a multi-user discount and we will need to renew it. And at that time, uh, it makes sense to try to get it as cheap as possible for everybody.
That'd be cool.
Yeah. Jeff, do you know if Furcog might have, you know, a multi-user situation going on that we can jump on?
I don't.
Somebody from another town in Franklin County told me that their town got a license through Furcog very inexpensively, but they couldn't tell me how, who or what. So it involves making a lot of phone calls or emails to Furcog people to figure it out.
Yeah, the only reason we took it is to familiarize. Although I used to have a personal license at home years ago, I just wanted to to get updated with the latest features because in fiscal in the next fiscal year, we're running a module to our assessor software that will let us be able to produce GIS maps of certain types of development down. So for instance, I could print out a map of all second own second homes in town, homes that have been sold in the last year by lot. So that's why we got it. And I just was using it to study and familiarize myself with it. When it comes up for renewal, I'll be happy to send it out to all the boards and say anybody interested in, you know, trying to get a discount.
It'd be worth a heads up if nothing else.
So you want to call somebody at Furcog?
Yeah, we're gonna do that. We'll try. I'll share whatever we find out because it's possible the Concom might also be interested. I was emailing Liam about it.
Yeah. So Peggy Sloan, I think would probably be the one to call.
Oh, well, thank you.
Do you want her number?
Um, I think I can probably figure it out unless you really want to give it to me right now.
Right back.
So while he's gone, can I ask a quick question? Can either Miriam or Kevin, can you just summarize? I mean, it's GIS mapping software, right? Is that basically what it does?
Um, it's it's basically GIS mapping software, but it lets you create at least what we're we're using it for. It will let us create our own maps that make more sense for what we're doing. And particularly, we look for patterns. So I know where, for instance, I know that most of the sales of property in town from mid 2018 and all through 2019 were primarily around the lake. But if you asked me to recite the map and lot numbers of the forty three parcels, I can't. So it's a lot easier, though visually to explain it with a picture. And since the folks were a lot younger than me, which is basically anybody younger than fifty has gone to visual scenario. You know, what we're trying to do is is do picture images to show people trends. Because it's a lot easier to say, this is where the houses were sold. This is where this is going. The only way to do that right now is to ask the vendor who hosts the town's assessing GIS map system to produce that map and that costs money. And this way we could just do it ourselves. You know, make a PDF and send it around. That's our goal. It also will call up the map. When we call up a parcel out of the database, it will show the GIS area and lot with it. And a lot of times when somebody questions their assessment, they're looking in their own neighborhood. Well, this will call up that neighborhood at the same time. So we can readily say, you know, when you say, well, my neighbor has this, we're looking at the neighbor's house as well. Because it lets us not only do the the map and lot, but it it backs out into Google Earth. So we can look at it from above. It's just a big time saver. Then switching back and forth between apps. And quite honestly, Mike, every time we switch back and forth, we're all going on the internet and there's, believe it or not, when you have four or five people in town hall using internet, which the town clerk does, Tessa does, which she's on, Becky's on all day, I'm on all day, Ellen's on every morning, we crawl. I mean, the only time I get full bandwidth is in the afternoon when nobody else is around. So that's one of the reasons primarily for only accessing one application. We can work a lot faster.
Cool. That was helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Miriam, Peggy's phone number is four one three seven seven four one one nine five extension one thirty three.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we good with this topic? Everybody happy? Okay, let's move on to Kevin's concern about the solar zoning areas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting me. If you remember, when you had your public hearing last year on the amended solar by law, I brought up the issue of District Six on your map at the at the public hearing. And I realized, you know, we're so close to the town meeting, there was nothing anybody could do. But over the last, since June, the the Board of Assessment, I've been discussing it.
Excuse me, Kevin.
Yes.
Yes.
I let Michael know that we were gonna that we were gonna be talking about this topic and he's prepared to screen share the zoning, the zoning map for the solar.
That's that's great.
I'm just trying to do it now. So I'll I'll get it there in a minute.
Okay, but our concern was, and I I verified with a lot of the assessors since then, that when a solar installation goes on state-owned land, the state gets the money on it. And there's just a concern that if you have this particularly District Six, but part of District Nine, if you have them on the map, even though it's an extraordinarily faint chance that the state might do one, it says you could put one there. And in which case, any pilot money would not go to the town to lower the tax rate. It would go to the state.
There we go.
And and my own feeling is, given the state, the 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 shape the state is in financially, going into not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, who knows where they'll look for revenue? So in particular, you know, we all agreed at last year's public hearing, District Six on your map is entirely state-owned land. And a good portion of District Nine is as well. I just suggested moving it up to New Boston Road on the map, which still leaves a large chunk of it there. But I'd be happy if you could at least remove District Six off the map as a location for solar. Just for that reason, from a revenue standpoint to the town. And you guys didn't really object when I brought it up last spring. It was just too close to the town meeting to really get into it. And so we kind of, you know, at the end of the hearing, it just my comment kind of died. But six is all state-owned land. Part of five is as well, and a good portion of nine, but six entirely is. And I'd be real happy if 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 you guys would amend your map at this year's annual town meeting and just remove that as a district. I'm less concerned with nine and and five. You know, although I'd love you guys to look at nine and figure out your own boundary. But six is definitely all state land. And that was my that was our comment. And the Board of Assessors agreed with me. And that's why we say in the letter, because it's you know, time enough before the annual town meeting to do something if you choose to.
So Kevin, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just getting back, I have some thoughts, but I I wanted to ask you. Can you just go the dynamic with if the if the state were to build something, they would they would get the pilot money.
Well, if the state were to say, let's say the state gets really hard up for money next year due to declining revenues, and somebody says, hey, we are very successful putting solar up and down the Mass Pike. And they get all that revenue. And I double check with the Mass Assessors Association and most of the assessors in the towns I knew had one. And all that money does not go to the underlying town. It goes to the state because the state owns the land. So if the state were to allow somebody to build solar, let's use Map Quadrant Six, for example, the town would get no money from that whatsoever. It's on state-owned land. We don't get to value that land. And we don't get to tax that land. The state determines the tax payment. And if solar went on it, the state would get all the rental revenue from it. And I don't think to do it or whatever pilot they did with the state. And it just makes sense. If we are going to have more solar in town, at least from a financial standpoint, and I talked to members of the FinCom privately, and I've talked to the Select Board about it, would rather have the revenue come into the Chutesberry coffers where it could be used to defray the rate. Just to give you an example, whether you like Wheelock or not, and I'm not talking about, you know, in favor of solar. Wheelock, once it began paying at full, which is now reduced the residential tax burden from almost ninety eight percent of every dollar, ninety eight cents of every dollar down to about ninety six. That's not a lot, but it's it's a reduction. So I mean, if you could reduce the tax rate by another two two cents, if it went on town, uh, you know, private property in town or town-owned property versus estate, it just makes sense to us from a financial standpoint.
Sir, Deacon, can I just comment?
Please, we're talking.
Okay, great. So I had a couple of thoughts, you know, and I'm thinking more practically, you know, so Kevin, I'm not going to necessarily address the the substance of like, is it a good idea or a bad idea? I'm thinking more practicality. Okay, so you know, where where I'm coming from is, we, you know, as you said, we town meeting just approved it in June. So we're in that. We're in the first year. And, you know, we're on the cusp of getting up to five special permit applications for solar. And so my preference would be not to do anything in the first year because let it let it exist for the it stably for first year. And I think that my can my bigger concern is that if we go back and we open up a conversation and say, well, we want to start tinkering and we're going to take one zone off as another, it muddies the water and it takes away the clarity of what the town meeting vote was.
Especially if you have these five coming in.
Yeah. And with one of them explicitly saying that they, you know, they're anticipating a waiver where, you know, they want to put a second one in three that it just it it you.
Michael, by the way, the waiver they mentioned at that meeting we had was waive your entire bylaw, not sections of it. They wanted to. They mentioned to say, why can't the town just waive that whole bylaw?
Oh, well, when they talked to us, when when Evan talked to us, he prefaces by saying, well, we want to put another one in three and we're going to be coming in for a waiver. And so practically speaking, my concern was, you know, town meeting approved this conceptually as a whole. And so given that, although we don't have any active special permits yet, there's activity. And it seems like if we were to open it up, whether you have a valid point or not, all of a sudden, it sort of calls into question the conceptual integrity of the whole thing.
Yeah, and we, you know, I've got no problem with that. If you want to wait until you get through with the five or wait a year or two, got no problem. I just want to keep raising the issue so it's not lost in all the fog of things. Because, you know, we all move on to things. The next crisis. I mean, I'm in a I'm in a baiting season now. I got eight applications came in, came in over the weekend. That's my life for the next two months. Yeah. Is I got eight houses to, you know, set up appointments for three different board members to go visit. So, you know, there are things to drop off. So while it was a downtime in December, I brought it up. Yeah. I mean, if you guys are saying would love to consider it, but like, wait two years? Fine with me.
Deacon.
Yes.
I I have I have. Well, first I have an observation. And I I used to work for DCR that owns all that land. And DCR, DCR itself pays pilot payments to Chutesbury. I think it's something in the order of a quarter million dollars or three hundred thousand or something like that.
Yeah, I I unfortunately, we can't break it out by department. We just have a lump sum of all the agencies what they pay.
Yeah, it's it's a substantial amount of money and a substantial amount to New Salem. And it's based on the it's based on the 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 valuation of of that particular property. If if a private developer were to make a deal with the state to and and, you know, the chances like zero with DCR, based on my experience with them. Because they're they're in the watershed business and I don't even think they could do that. But even if they did, the there there would be no pilot payments paid from the applicant to the state because the state doesn't collect property taxes. So that that would not be an issue. What would likely happen is the value of that state land on which the solar farm sat would increase. And the state's pilot to Chutesbury would likely increase.
You're incorrect. We don't get to. Once they buy the land, they value it afterwards. For instance, when they bought the Historical Enterprises piece off Stone Drive, they bought everything but eight acres last year. I'm sorry, at the end of actually nineteen. They used the value of the purchase price as the value for the first year of paying us, which will actually be fiscal twenty two. But after that, they are free to set whatever value they want. And they do not pay us the equivalent tax amount. We are probably paid less than a third of what the property tax would be. We get we we also get they average all state properties statewide. There's one state office that does it. And then they decide a per acre price statewide that does not favor a small town like us.
Okay, all I'm saying is that if if they had something on their property like a solar farm.
Yes.
The the app, the the applicant would would not be paying any pilots to anyone else. Because the state doesn't collect property taxes. So there's no reason to do pilots.
But they are getting payment in all the other towns, Jeff.
What are you talking about?
All the towns along the Mass Pike, where the Mass Pike went and put solar installations, sought bids. Which I'm trying to remember the company that has them.
Right, the applicant would pay the state for, you know, for a lease or something.
Right, but the the underlying towns get nothing. More more value with that land increase.
That's not taking anything out of Chutesbury's pocket. That's not taking anything out of Chutesbury's pocket. You know, Coles gets paid for, for a lease. We don't get that. Coles gets it. In this case, the state would get it. That doesn't take anything away from us. And likely. And you may be right that they don't assess fully, but likely the property would increase in value by some amount. And Chutesbury would probably get a higher pilot payment. From the state because of that. Additional value.
Well, only if we take them. To their hearing process. To up the value of the land and would be outgunned and outloaded instantly. It probably cost me $10,000 to $20,000 to prove the value when up $10,000 or $20,000.
The, the one thing that, that DCR doesn't do, at least that's what they, they always claimed is they never. Reduce the value of a pilot. It can only go up. And that's true, that's true throughout the DCR watershed, not DCR state, but the DCR watershed. Which is what six is. So it can never go down.
I have a suggestion. Since Kevin's good with not. Doing this in the next year or two. How about we table the discussion for a year or two and then we can revisit it and you guys can. We can do some research in between.
There, there is one other factor. I, I had. That, that was the first observation. The second is that there has been a land court case that we should all be aware of. And land court is, is a court of low jurisdiction, but. Many cases start there and. It, it, it ruled against the town that tried to segregate. Solar facilities into a small portion of its land area. Or a portion of its land area. I'm not sure what percentage it is. But one thing I always felt good about with the Chutesbury map is that we pretty much had it spread out. Almost all over town, probably 90% is eligible for these types of things. And. That to me insulates us a little bit from, from this land court case.
Yeah. I would agree. I think, cause you had mentioned this, we didn't create a solar ghetto, so to speak. We just distributed equally across town to some, you know, that was the intent.
No, it's spread all over town. I, you know, our concern was just in the unlikely case. That the state, the state decided to look for more revenue. Which again, given the COVID situation, next fiscal year is when everybody expects municipal aid to drop. The state aid, the state revenue to crater. And everything. Just a simple, you know, you never know what they're going to do. And, and Jeff, in that hearing last year, you remind me, property sold every day. I, I don't expect them to sell off watershed protection, but somebody might say, hey, there is a way to get some money out there. You know, we, we're, we're paying for that land. Here's, here's a way. That was my only issue. But like I said. You guys have your hands full. But while I'm on, I did get an email this afternoon. I am a retired town moderator in my, in my hometown. I did get an email today that I thought you'd want to be aware of from the Mass Assessors Association. That the so-called Economic Development Bond Bill that's sitting on the governor's desk. Which is House. Hold on one second. I gotta reduce. My screen. I know, Michael, you like to look these up. I believe it's House 5220. But if not, I will send it to you when I get off in a minute. It changes. The requirement. For some zoning articles from two thirds of a vote down to majority. In that bylaw. And. Way I got it was the town planner, Milton, Milton sent it to his moderator. And that their moderator then went and sent it. To the mass moderators line and I got it about six o'clock. And I'm looking at it and there, it outlines the section. If you hang on one second. I'm just going to reduce you. On my screen and pull up the. The, I can give Michael the chapter. H5250.
H5250.
50 dated January 6th. Is the so-called Economic Development Bond Bill sitting on the governor's desk.
Okay.
And there is a section in it and I have the lines in the email and I'll forward it to you, Michael, when I get off. It says, I haven't read it yet. It's one of those 14,000 page bills. But buried in it. It changes the two thirds majority to a simple majority for some, not all. Zoning. And I thought you guys would want to know about that. Because that came out of left field.
Interesting.
So I thought you guys might want to know about it. And I can send it to you when I'm going to get off in a second because you.
Thank you.
Considered the letter, but I thought you might want to know that that's buried in that bill. Cause. You know, I rarely look at the, being, I've been a retired moderator for five years, so I rarely look at their thing, but it's the zoning changes. And so I read it and it surprised me because. I don't think that, you know, it might be one of those last minute. Things. That's what the governor kept trying to change on affordable housing. And I think he threw it in the middle of that bill. So you could decide how.
Would you, would you send that to the, the planning board email? So we all received that?
I, I will. I'll do it right when I get off. But like I said, you know, I'm not a professional planner. I did my time on the planning board in my town, but I figured you guys who want to know about it because. It's a first I've heard of and I follow the news pretty closely.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hopefully. You guys for a better verse can go interpret it and how it affects your day to day business.
Well, I, I can tell you that the mass. The Attorney General's Office Municipal Law Unit is trying to figure out how to give guidance to communities on interpretation of those provisions because. It, it, it calls for making determinations about what. Types of zoning changes will take a, a two thirds vote now, which take a simple majority vote. And it's not readily apparent. What, what? So it's going to be. There, there's going to be guidance forthcoming from that law unit. So.
Yeah. And, and, and we're waiting on the, on the solar one that got, that did get, well, we're still waiting for the governor to find out if he signed it. On that one, the very last line in the section that applies to assessing. Gives the Department of Revenue nine months to come up with guidelines around how we're supposed to assess them. And we're now saying to the DOR, you're going to talk to us before you do that? Cause just so you guys know, they've changed the policy every year for the last four years in a row on how we value them. So. Every year. We go nuts at that tax setting time. But, but gentlemen, I want to say, I want to thank you, Tessa. I want to thank you for your time. And Nathan, to your comment, as soon as I get off, I'll forward that to the. It's planning board at chutesbury.org.
Yeah, same as you.
I'll do that right now.
We're not all gentlemen.
Yes.
I apologize.
All right, all right.
Even the males among us are not gentlemen.
Well, whenever anybody addresses me as gentleman, I say where, but. But in, in any event, I thank you for your time on the letter. We're, as long as at some point you, you look at it again, we're happy. And I, believe me, I do not want to be in your shoes if all five applications come down on it, nor do I envy you. What you have to deal with. So. Good luck and I'll forward that in a few minutes.
Well, thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Right.
Right.
Deacon, can I give one quickie thing?
Please.
One thing, I think. Nathan and Jeff are on this, but when. At the select board meeting last week, when Kevin was reporting, he just sort of mentioned this, the climate roadmap. That. I don't know if the governor signed it yet, but when it happened, when the meeting happened last week, it was on his desk. But the thing of note that we've been talking about was. That there is a. A developer who is questioning whether they had to pay pilot to a town for solar development and. That got codified in the legislation that passed. The House and the Senate saying that in fact, you know, towns could. Charge pilot for development. So. If and when the governor signs it, that issue will be off the table for us. So that's good news.
Yeah.
Yeah. When I saw that, I, I, it didn't say anything about. Payment. Procedures other than pilot.
Right.
It seemed to be limited to that.
Yeah, I actually, I.
Normally what pilot does is just replace the, the, the normal assessment where you. Assess the whole value.
Right.
But then you've got to account for depreciation and it gets complicated. So you just. Simplify it through a 20 year fixed payment.
Right. And, and, and all the big payments upfront don't have to be made.
Yeah.
The, the incentive to negotiate a pilot. Is so they won't have to pay. Kind of normally. You know, through the assessors coming in and saying, oh, look at all this. We have 30 acres of solar panels. They're worth this much and. Apply our tax rate to that and that's what you pay. So pilot just gets you out of that. And that's the incentive to. Negotiate a pilot and agree to a pilot. So. I, I'm hoping that somewhere there's. Some implicit authority that we can tax them normally otherwise.
Yeah, but, but one thing that, that, that. Fixed payment arrangement over years does is that it means that the developer doesn't have to pay the. The higher undepreciated rates. At the beginning.
Right.
Right.
And you know, that's a. That's a funny thing.
Yeah. I mean, at the municipal level, it gives you steady income because you can count on a certain amount. So there's benefit there.
But if you, but with the, with the cost of money, it's, it's, it winds up being to the developer's benefit. Seriously, it seems to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's move on to the, to the three sets of minutes.
Do we have enough? Jeff, you didn't read them. Are you okay with us discussing them and approving them since we got? So I'll move to.
Really fallen behind. We really need to start approving.
Yeah. So I'll move to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2020.
Second.
That was Robert?
Yeah.
Nathan.
I said this at the beginning, but for all of these, I love the new format, Tessa. I think you did a great job. I, you know, I. I think it strikes a really good balance between giving the reader enough information. Without going through the word for word. I, I overheard when I was muted that you were thinking about cutting it and I, I wouldn't. I think this gives you enough substance, but I love them.
I wasn't saying I was thinking of it. I was saying I was going to bring that up that like, the fact that I know the commission talks about making it shorter to make it easier for the public to go, get through, but. So I was saying they still are long. They're all multiple pages, but I just wanted to say I did cut. In some cases, in one of them, like two pages out of the text. And they were still that long. So yeah, I think cutting further might get away from detail. So I just wanted to put that in front of the board of saying, I could cut and make it just say. This topic was discussed.
Yeah.
But if you want any detail, yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah. I think if you said this topic was discussed, it would do a disservice. So that, you know, to the readers and it wouldn't have the. Necessary. Information. I have one. Edit to give.
And this is in December?
October.
October, okay.
Yeah. So on page four. It's a. The third paragraph under approaches to excessive special permit work. It's the, it's the last sentence. It says, currently it says preliminary solar plans were denied. You see that? It starts out with bylaws.
Yep.
So it should say preliminary subdivision. Plans were denied. And, and then I would, I also just changed the end. To say we're do, we're denied due to missing information and non-compliance with town subdivision regulations.
Missing. Info and.
Non-compliance with, that's all the same. But then instead of saying the new bylaws, which I think is not. There's nothing new about. The regulations. So to just say town subdivision regulations. And that would be accurate.
And you, you probably want to add state statutes because.
Oh yes, good.
More seriously, they violate the state statutes.
Good catch.
Thank you, both of you.
Any other comments on the October minutes? I'll call the. Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Robert?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff or?
I was there, so I'll, I'll vote affirmative.
Okay, Nathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. And November?
I'll move to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2020.
Robert's second.
Okay, okay, discussion?
I had three small things. I think they're just typos. So not like my other usual stuff. This is, makes it much easier, Tessa. So on page two, there's two of them. I think. Tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, on the, in the middle where it says de carer disclosure. The line that says to the town clerk in Bonner. It, it should say he does not need. You just got that that does.
Okay.
And then under associate members. I think you're just missing an S. It says board members, board member suggests amending. And then on the next page. On three, I didn't have time to look this up, but. Where it says Coles Projects. And then a couple of lines that says per Dowling, there are six N Reds. You got that? Is, it should be abbreviated with a D at the end, as opposed to abbreviate.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? About the November minutes?
Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Robert? Linda?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Nathan? Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay, in December.
I'll move to approve the minutes of December 14th, 2020.
Second?
Robert's second.
All right. And discussion of those.
I had, I had two here too, also very small. So on page three, Tessa. They're both, they're both under fee schedule. The second line that starts would allow. All the way at the end, I think it, you're just missing a D. It should be, that can be associated with a project. And then farther down, it says the planning board can hire. And I think you meant consultants as opposed to constants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, more discussion? I'll call the roll. Robert?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. That was great. Great.
And I guess I don't know, Deacon, if you wouldn't mind asking board just confirmation that this is the format that I should use moving forward. I've heard from a couple of board members, but.
Sure, let's, well, I know that Michael and I have expressed to you our, our approval of the. Of the minute, of the minute strategy. What are, are other people? Pleased?
So, so, so this is a. Less like a transcript and. More summary and, and making sure that, yeah, kind of like we discussed.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think. I mean. I, I'm in hearty approval of the, of the improvements.
Okay. I just wanted to know if anyone else who hadn't, on the board who hadn't spoken yet, had an opinion, but that's, that's great.
So how, how many pages did they, did the last set become?
The December ones, I believe is three. Or maybe slightly over three. The longest one was still at five pages.
One was only like. Two and. Like a half. It was great.
Sometimes we go faster.
Well, you know, that's, that's the thing, you know, if, if we sit here and ramble on about something and don't really say very much, then it can be a paragraph.
It happens a lot.
Yeah, you know, with the October meeting, you know, there was a lot of content there that was discussed and, you know, it takes up a few more pages. You get a screenshot of a map. You know. So I, I think it's a very good job on that, Tessa. Thank you.
Okay. Good feedback. Modifications can be made in the future. So it's just because it's. Not held.
We look at it, if we feel that there's any, you know. You know, material content that is. You know, shortchanging the public with, you know, having an idea of what's going on and being said, then. You know, we, it's our responsibility to say something and have that added at the review. At the next meeting.
Were you trying to say, were you trying to say something, Jeff?
Yeah. So we, we do list all the documents that we have used or the things that have been submitted, any letters or memos or. Maps or exhibits and things like that.
At this point, there have been, I've been. At this point, there have been, uh, I've been in, uh, embedding them in the, in the text, but if you would like to see, moving forward, a list at the bottom of the minutes, just listing the different documents, then I can do that.
I think as long as, as long as they're in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as they're in there somewhere, things that we, things that we reference.
Okay.
Like, like in, in tonight's meeting, Michael put up the map of the, the solar map. So somewhere in that discussion, it should probably mention that we, that we referred to the solar map because it was a it was an important document that we used.
It might also be good to, uh, include or, uh, yeah, include the email that was sent from, uh, the, uh, the assessor, um, to raise the, uh, topic of, uh, that we just covered there.
Yeah, if we're ever discussing something that's been brought to our attention through some type of correspondence, then we mention the correspondent.
Everybody happy? Okay, um, let's move on. Let's move on to associate members.
Want me to kick that off, Deacon?
Yeah, well, I, I'll say one thing first. I did, I did note, um, in re, in looking at the special permit section of the zoning that nine three B, uh, says that the planning board w- will have alternate members. And this is, this is a piece of text that, that needs to be thrown into the mix. I mean, because maybe we just want to replace replace that with, with new stuff, maybe, maybe we want to eliminate that and put this somewhere else, but we need to take, we need to take note of that, of that mention in the existing zoning.
What's, say that differently?
Nine three B, page sixty-five.
Okay, but it, it says this.
It says we will do this.
But alternate as opposed to associate?
Yes, exactly, exactly, but but I think this must be something that our consultant threw in at the get-go and that we never paid heed to.
So we called them alternates?
Yeah, yeah. But it's text that's there.
Hold on, let me, what was it, nine three B?
Yeah, page sixty-five.
Isn't that something?
Well.
Let's just have a, an election.
Well, you know, it's weird, though. I mean, it's, I mean, it's weird terminology, because since, I mean, because the state law talks about associate members.
I'm not, I'm not commenting on the weird terminology, I'm just saying that we, I'm just saying that we need to take this, these sentences into account when, when we revise.
Yeah, yeah, we might want to just strike it.
It, yes.
Well, well, okay, so here's what the statute says. And this is under section nine, special permits?
Yeah, it's on the top of the handout, here, I can, I'll, I'll, uh, share the screen if it's helpful. So everyone can see it. Let's see. I made it too big, sorry.
Okay, yeah, zoning ordinances bylaws may provide for associate members of the planning board when a planning board has been designated as special permit granting authority. Is, is that the part of our zoning bylaw that it's in, Deacon, the special permit part, or where is it?
It's, it's, uh, it's in the special, it's right at the beginning of special permits.
Okay, so it's in the right place.
Yeah, I mean, it might be that we just wanted, want to replace existing nine three B with, with whatever we arrive at.
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how much more we need.
Well.
Because we've already, we've already probably, yeah, as long as you're willing to accept that alternate means associate.
Well, I don't think we should assume that, and it's also, I also think the process, like, we should talk through the stuff I've sent, just because this, this is an election and there's no specificity here, so.
Right, right, right. I'm only saying we need to deal with it.
No, no, I'm talking to Jeff, I think I, because he's, he's thinking that might be sufficient, what we have.
Um, hold on, shall determine the procedure for filling.
You guys can see this, right?
Well, it, it starts disappearing off the, um,
Oh.
Off the right side.
How's that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I guess my main question is, do we have to go at this, uh, with a bylaw? Or can we do it through a regulation, which we can do quickly by ourselves? Because we, we may already have what we need in the zoning bylaw by what Joel put in there. Notwithstanding, it says alternate.
It also says elected.
Yeah, we don't want elected.
Deacon, can you read that again?
Um, yeah, for the purposes of its actions, as an SPGA, the planning board shall have two alternates elected as provided in the zoning act with the duties and powers set forth in the zoning act, MGL chapter forty A, including but not limited to the power to hear and decide upon special permits.
Elected, that's probably not the best.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, this isn't where we want to go.
No, we don't want to go to elected. All right, let's move on and talk about some of what Michael's doing.
Yeah, because that's more, that's of more input.
Okay, so, thank you for catching that, Deacon, that's very helpful. So I'll just, I'll just frame it, so I sent you two versions. Um, and the reason was, uh, when last we met, the question was, I should, well, I, it was, I was asked to go to the select board and ask them how much involvement do they want, um, in the process? And, um, I did that and not surprisingly, they wanted more, um, than less. And they came away, you know, basically saying, we like the process that's in place in statute for filling a vacancy, which is what we just did with Nathan, where both boards came together and then jointly as the full number of members that were present at the meeting, the, the majority of election was determining it. So, but I wrote two, one was with a joint and there was disagreement amongst us. So, you know, Steve had recommended that we do the joint voting process and then Jeff was suggesting that he might prefer having it be that, um, the planning board did the appointment. So that was sort of how we came into the process and therefore I ended up writing two and then I emailed everyone a third about an hour ago, the test could pull up if we need. The thing that I would say in terms of the, the selection process, it, if we did the appointment and for every, everyone who's appointed in a committee in town, the process right now is that annually, you know, in June, the select board makes an official appointment. So whether you're on, you know, concom or historical or recreation, whatever, that committee gets asked to make recommendations and then whatever the set of names is, the select board then votes to make the appointment and usually it's just en masse, they just basically say, you know, we're going to accept all of these. So there's a mechanism for the select board to have input if we wanted to create a process where the planning board did the appointment, you know, did a recommendation and then the official appointment happened, but the select board, so there's two ways of going, either we can jointly appoint or we can do the subsequent thing. I think the, the select board would prefer the joint one. But aside from that, the, the things that I would just say to walk through, that are important in terms of this is, um, in either case, you know, it's, it's interesting is that there's a possibility based on vacancies or whatever, that we, we could be in a situation where we don't have a quorum, which means that the body can't act, which is why the language isn't here, that the chairman would make a decision. Um, so that's why that's there, it's sort of unusual, but the whole idea is that if we didn't have a quorum, we couldn't act and we would be looking to get associate members for some reason, um, highly unlikely, but that's sort of why that's there. What I did in both cases is that had the planning board established the process for soliciting and receiving names, so it would be us, to us to figure out how we wanted to do it, what the timing was, you know, but just that there's a caveat that the notice would be as broad as possible to the residents of Shute's Berry. Um, I did suggest that, um, because the planning board is an elected body, that anyone who's an associate member should be, um, a resident and therefore eligible, um, to be elected, you know, so if you're not a resident, you can't get elected to a position in town, you're getting appointed to one, so technically a non-Shute's Berry resident could be appointed, but it seems that we're, since we're an elected body, and at some point an associate might rise up to being elected, we would want to have that person be a eligible to be elected at any, in a point in the future, um, and just for consistency. I did reflect that the term would be three years, which is what we had talked about and, um, I had it be renewable, um, by a majority vote of the planning board, so we didn't create too much bureaucracy, so if someone served for up to three years, um, that if we could just simply vote to renew them, but that is, uh, you know, if a second renewal would have to go through the same process again, so that, um, someone just couldn't be an associate member for, you know, three, four, multiple terms. And then the last thing that I think is just worth noting is sort of, we talked about the scope of what the responsibility is and the way I ended up writing it, and again, this is sort of, it's written with the idea that the chair, um, the other towns had this as well, but the chair is the one who sort of designates that there's a need for an associate member. And what I wrote was that, uh, basically the, the chair would say, you know, we've got these two associate members on the bench waiting, you know, maybe coming to meetings or whatever, but the chair would designate that there was a need for an associate member and basically designate the purpose for participation and the time period for participation. And whether it was one or not, so that it was sort of predefined and then that person could act as a full member for either the time period that was designated um, or for the purpose, um, you know, so for example, with the solar stuff, if the purpose was to hear a special permit on Pratt Corner East, that that for the entire period that that was in play and active, that person would be there. Um, as opposed to saying six months and then have to revisit it. And then the other thing which towns differed on was, um, when they're not acting as a full member, what can they do? And, you know, my thought was, um, oh, and actually, well, there's another point in addition, but, um, basically what I was thinking is if we had associate members, that they should be able to sit up with us, but they wouldn't participate, um, in deliberation. Because they just shouldn't be, they can receive communications, they can be getting emails that they're up to snuff on stuff, but they wouldn't be participating in the election, uh, in deliberation, and then Jeff had mentioned, you know, that we don't want to limit it, um, to what statute said, I think, Jeff, you had said that it was a floor, not a ceiling. And so the way I wrote it was that, um, when designated, an associate member may participate fully in procedures for a special permit, site plan review, or any other application before the planning board as well as other procedural matters designated by the chairperson, including but not limited to conducting hearings of the planning board. Um, you know, so if we need to approve bylaws or something like that, you know, there's, we basically um, would be able to invite an associate member to participate in any other kind of hearings or procedures that we needed. Um, so it wasn't limited just to the, um, special permits or site plan reviews. So I think that's, um, pretty much it. So I don't know if people have comments or questions.
Well, I, I have a question, now, in a situation where, where a member needs to be recused from a special permit hearing, one would want, the, the chair would want the associate member certainly to act on the special permit, but what about the others, the other issues that happen at the same meeting, does the, does the regular member, um, participate in everything else and the associate member does only the special permit or?
Well, I was, it's a great question, that's, that's why I was thinking about the scope, the way I wrote it, is that it would be up to the chair to designate, so if you designated, for example, that you know, associate member X will, um, is designated as a acting member for purposes of hearing the special permit, that would only be for that. Alternatively, you could say, associate member X is designated to be acting as a full member for the next year, um, in which case they could do, you know, so that you've got the ability to designate what the scope is, either by time or purpose. And then you could adjust it if need be.
You can adjust it a, as necessary.
Yeah.
All along.
Right. So.
I mean, a typical situation would be that you'd have a special permit before you, which and there'd be a special permit hearing only every so many months.
Right.
And in the in-between time, um, that, that, that associate member would not be acting as special member.
Exactly, they're, they're not de facto a, a full member, just for limited purposes.
Yeah.
On, on the zoning board of appeals, we have, um, we have one, sometimes two associate members that that are there and, um, at least one of them attends all the meetings and, um, could be, um, could be dropped, because we're only three, um, members, could be dropped in at any time, uh, you know, to make up a quorum or to, uh, you know, just to participate. Uh, if there's an absence or illness or, uh, some other reason that comes up that one of our, one of us that's a regular member can't be there. But, um,
A canine associate member now.
Huh?
We have a canine associate member now.
If it's not the kid, it's the dog, they can't leave you alone.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's interesting, Jeff, is, you know, when, the way I wrote it was that, even when they're not in an active state, state of, you know, being an acting member, the associate members, you know, if there's, they can still get communications, they can still come to the meetings and sit, you know, up at the table with us, so that no, you want them to be informed, um, so that if they do have to step in, they can step in, they're not, they're not doing catch-up. But not giving them the full ability to be, you know, an extra member. That was where I was trying to find that balance.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if you have special permits going on, um, and hearings and things like that, uh, it's probably better that the associate members uh, attend the meetings, so that they've actually witnessed and heard all this stuff. And then, um, if, if they're needed, that they could be employed, uh, if something comes up with a regular voting member. But I, I would suppose the chair would, would get to dictate how much participation the, the associate member would have on a regular basis when they're not actually filling in. I know Chuck on the ZBA gives our associate member, um, you know, almost equal treatment to the rest of us. Even though he can't necessarily vote on things, you know, his opinion is, is valued.
If a full member is disabled, uh, for a large portion of the term, let's say a couple of years, uh, the chair can appoint the associate to fulfill the place for the balance of that term?
Um, I think so, I mean, well, it's sort of interesting, I mean, I think it's a great question, Robert, I, you know, prac, I think the way we're, we're writing it, yes. I think it would beg the question of, if there's a vacancy, like if that, if that member who's disabled has to vacate, then it would kick into another process, but as long as that person's sort of coming back and hasn't vacated, then I think what the scenario you outlined would, would work. You know, and I, I think, Jeff, I mean, we can discuss it, I mean, the way I wrote it is I said, um, when not acting as a member of the board, associate members may not vote or participate in deliberation of the planning board. They may be seated with the planning board and receive communications at the discretion of the chairperson in order to follow planning board business. So, you know, it's, we're not saying that, because they're not elected, you know, and they're not full members. So they're really pinch hitters. Um, so I think for me, the balance is, you want them to be engaged and you want them to be informed. So I think for me, the balance is you want them to be engaged and you want them to be informed. But you don't want to be expanding our our ranks because we all got elected by the members. And if they start deliberating and asking questions and stuff, then they actually are becoming active members, which is different than the intent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm dealing with another town right now, zoning board of appeals that has two associate members. And, you know, there's some questions about who could do what. And I was just consulting with with my friend Bob today on on this and 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 he said, as as long as they were there and witnessed everything, that they in fact did more, they participated. The chair allowed them to ask questions and and to participate, even though, even though one of them couldn't vote in the end, they could still ask questions and engage in the debate at the the allowance of the chair. I I would I would say you would probably have a better prepared associate member if that member was able to engage in the in the questioning in the process, you know, sort of get it, get their questions answered and things like that and have dialogue, but still not be able to vote unless they were, they were designated later. I I would think you'd have, you'd have an associate more ready to step in.
Jeff, this is Tessa. Did you look into it? Because Town Council, just to get background for the rest of the board, Town Council was at the last ZBA meeting. And Town Council seemed to say that her interpretation, and Jeff, you can correct me if you remember differently from what she's Donna Nichols said, was that an associate member couldn't come in if there was a sickness, like it had to be designated ahead of time. And I knew that you didn't think that was true. Did you look into that?
Yes.
Okay.
And what her interpretation is is not correct.
Okay.
That associate can be brought in at at any time. And I mean, that, I mean, otherwise you'd have to anticipate ahead of time what member is going to get sick halfway through. And that's just impractical.
Perhaps a nuance with that would be like a special permit process where, you know, you begin a special permit process and you've already had more than one hearing. And then somebody gets sick, right? So I don't know if you can put in an associate member into that spot because they've already missed more than one meeting.
Well, all right, Bob said that if your associate member had been attending the meetings all along, then they can drop right in. They've met those requirements. If they haven't, there's a provision in the statute, the Mullen rule, that establishes a way to catch up. And the associate could catch up by doing whatever they had to do, listen to tapes, transcripts of previous meetings to catch up.
So what does the chair have to do to to designate an associate member?
You
Duty.
Well, if we have, so if we have, just say we have one or two people sitting on, you know, they're, they're already been selected, however they've gotten selected. So they're live even being sitting on the sidelines. We're sitting up with us. At the point that you, as chair, realize that there's a need where you anticipate there's a need, you know, it could be in advance of. I think you just put it on the agenda and as part of the open meeting, you say, we're now, the chair is now going to designate, you know, Joe Schmo to be an active acting member, you know? And then again, it's sort of stating the purpose or the time. So
So so I would have to do that before the agenda was posted?
Um, well, unless it's an item that's not expected by the chair. You know, so if all of a sudden someone, you know, for whatever reason, had to leave town for three months, you know, and it was after the agenda was created, but before the meeting, you know, you could put anything on the agenda that's not expected. So you wouldn't be limited by that, but you, it would have to be something that was, you know, an item in public meeting, whether it's an agenda item or an unanticipated item. But I think it's the simplest, you going on record and designating, because the chair is the one who has the responsibility to do it.
It involves use of your scepter, Deacon.
Scepter.
You know, the other thing I just throw out, just before we sort of, because I think we should try to figure out the selection process, the the third alternative that I was pondering around and I sent to Tessa, but you know, if you think of the the two that we have now, on the one hand is select board and planning board jointly vote. That's, that's the current scenario the select board likes, and it's the one in statute fulfilling a vacancy. Then there's this other one that basically says the planning board will make a recommendation and pass that name forward to the select board who does the official appointment, which replicates the whole process for everybody else in town. And the in between is to say, if you have more individuals interested than there are slots, so if we have two slots and we have five people, that the planning board would make nominations with at least one more person than there are slots. So if we had five people interested in two slots, we would have to nominate three that the two committees would jointly vote on, you know? So the idea would be that we'd have some control of winnowing down the process. And the reason I thought of that is school committee did develop that when we were thinking about, I think it was either teacher or, yeah, for teacher hires, because whatever did happen is, you know, the principal would have a selection committee. No, not teacher, principal hires, where the superintendent makes the decision, but the school committee wanted a voice. And so the idea was to have require a certain nominees to be going forward. So that's sort of middle ground. I think push comes to shove, the select board wants to have the joint voting. That's, that's my sense. But if we felt strongly that the planning board should have a little bit more control over the process and have some imprint, you could do the other two.
My own sense is it is if the select board wants, wants controlled, I don't want to fight it. I'm, I'm all right with that.
I'm not.
Okay, okay.
But I I don't mind putting the boards together and and having a vote because we're seven and they're three. That's fine. But that's still, I mean, we're the ones that have to work with these people for years and years, so. I think we should have more say.
And if we can, you know, circling back to the point we were discussing, I wanted to jump in there before we got too far ahead of it with. I agree with what Jeff said regarding allowing people to deliberate. You know, we're asking them to be here and and step in and, you know, if it's somebody who's a veteran planner, then, you know, they don't have to deliberate. They can you know, keep up however they see fit. But if it's, if it's somebody who is maybe like myself, who who's nor, you know, I do think it would be helpful for them to be able to ask questions and also potentially provide valuable insight from one more set of eyes and set of experiences.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I I actually, I mean, I don't know if I like that, because then, I mean, I get the wanting to have people be more engaged. And they wouldn't be able to vote. I mean, I think that's
Yeah, you know, they wouldn't be able to vote unless designated. But take public comment. I mean, even with the public comment, you know, oftentimes during a meeting, the the chair would allow public comment from someone who's not a member of a board.
Yeah. Well, I think that would be the thing is maybe it's, you know, deliberation at the discretion of the chair. You know, I gotta say, you know, to Jeff's point, when I first got on the committee and I, and you guys were wrapping up the Wheelock stuff and I couldn't say anything, it's really hard sitting up there not saying anything. So, you know, I think, you know, if Deacon were able to sort of say, you know, or if I were able to ask Deacon in that situation, may I comment on something? You know, that it sort of differentiates a full member from an acting member, but it doesn't mean that they can't say anything. So that's sort of like a middle ground.
It's still always up to the chair whether, e- even a full member, whether we get to speak. I mean, the chair can clam one butt up if if they wish.
That's technically, that's true, but practically speaking, the
But there's a different, but the the key point in your situation was that you were recused.
Oh, I know. I'm just talking about like, I totally get that it was different. But nonetheless, if we wrote in here that they couldn't deliberate, it would be no different for them in terms of their experience.
Yeah, and I think that's something that we should consider for if someone is, you know, right now, we're looking at this situation where we're probably gonna throw some people in with these solar developments between possible butters and my situation. But, you know, once this goes by and, you know, you've got an associate member sitting there, you know, maybe a year and a half, two years with no action and they're not allowed to chime in on the stuff going on, yeah, they're gonna lose interest and, you know, fall off. So I think it is, you know, it's good to have people engaged. And I don't think it's any, you know, skin off of our you know, I mean, we're, we, you know, this is an elected body with the exception of my appointed self. But, you know, the elected body is going to be working with another elected body to appoint these individuals. You know, we're going to be responsible for doing vetting and, you know, making sure that we're, you know, putting people up that are aligned with, you know, what we deem is the interest of the town and who are you know, going to be good candidates to step in if they're needed. And you know, I think that's a a high enough bar to allow people to speak. Whether or not they should be allow people to vote, right?
Nathan is a good example of if I can pretend he's here as an associate member. I mean, it really is, it's so helpful to witness Nathan, Nathan's participation, his engagement. And so aside from engaging you, it really engages the people who witness you and will do everything we can to to get you into a full membership.
Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, on the zoning board of appeals, the the alternate member is, is sometimes treated so much like a regular member that the the applicants don't know the difference. And it it only becomes evident when that member doesn't vote. But he's fully prepared to step in at any time because he's fully participated and you know, his, his input is beneficial, so.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with, I guess I just would flip it a little bit. So if we ended up, you know, just say we go with the joint appointment and you know, we elect someone, Jeff, you don't particularly like whoever got elected. If they have full reign of deliberating, it seems like it, there's a chance of saying, you know, we, we all got elected by town, you got it appointed. There's no, like, I, I like the idea of basically saying they can participate. You know, with the approval of the chair, so at least there's a slight differentiation. Because otherwise, the only thing that differentiates them is they don't vote. They're really a full member all the time, except they don't vote, which is not what they should be. They're supposed to be stepping in. So I think there has to be some differentiation in terms of their activity. And I guess
I I wouldn't mind that, yeah, just to acknowledge that that the chair needs to recognize, it needs to recognize them.
Well, in theory, I I'm supposed to recognize anybody who wants to talk. I mean, that
Well, no, you, you see, if I don't like this person, I can remind you that that you have to recognize them.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Yeah. I think it's just having it in there. I mean, my guess is if we do this in five years, people will forget what it says. You know, because tradition's going to kick in, but having it be there, it seems like you want to respect that their time and effort. You want to have them engaged. You want them to be up to, up to speed on the issues. All those things are really important. So we should write it to support that. But just maybe codify it so it's slightly different. So there's some differentiation between full membership and not.
I mean, it, it, sure, but I I do think that in practice, we're, we're, we're going to want to encourage the participation of the associates in the discussion.
I mean, it seems like that's the sense of the group.
I mean, it would be an exception if we didn't.
Yeah, I I think you'll keep them around longer if if they get to feel a part of the the group, like they're contributing in some way, even though they they have no final vote.
Yeah.
And and we don't want to keep having to do this all the time.
No.
Associates and, you know, they stick around for a few years, they start figuring out how to do things and what our authority is and
Well, let me ask you a question. Because that seems like we reached agreement on that one. In terms of where Jeff's going now, you know, basically, the way I set it up was that they're in there for up to three years. And then it's just for the planning board can re-up them for another three years. But then if they wanted to do starting in year seven, they would have to re-go through the whole process again. Does that work for people? Does, is that not what we want to do? The easiest way is just to have the planning board keep approving renewals for each term. But I could also see that someone, although you get longevity, you also get the downside of longevity that no one else can get in. And that's an easy on-ramp for sort of participating in the planning board. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to close that off necessarily, but what do you guys think?
Well, someone else can't get in if the planning board decides at some point we don't want to renew this particular associate.
That's true.
I think, yeah, this is, this is tough for me because on one hand, if if you have a good person, well, you know, if you have a good person in there that you want to put in, it's, could be just as easy to go, you know, you have a public meeting and you know, there's typically consensus here and, you know, you just vote them in again after six years.
I I like the idea of every three years, we, we get to either re-up the associate ourselves or refer the associate or not to the select board. Is 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 that what you're talking about, Michael? That that each three-year period, you know, if we have someone who's not really working out and we may be aware of someone else who wants to get on that we think would be a better fit, we could we could end it at the end of any three-year period?
Yeah, well, I was actually trying to split the difference between both concepts. So I was thinking at the end of a three-year period, that first three years, it just required the planning board majority to re-up them. And then for the next three, so starting at year seven, we'd have to go to the planning board. But that was really, I was, it was more a conceptual compromise between the two, two versions. So that's what I wrote. Either, you know, we can go either way, because what you're saying, Jeff, is every three years we do the joint appointment. Or we go to the select board, however we're going to do it.
I was just verifying that that every three years, you know, after the first, after they get on, every three years, we're sort of the gatekeepers. Because we'll know if we have someone who's working out or not. And we could basically give them the gate after, after any three-year period.
Okay, so you're agreeing with Nathan saying that we, it should just be the planning board who votes to renew?
Well, I I'm saying I could go either way on it, you know, you know, I, you know, I could, I could go with the planning board, you know, every three years has the ability to renew, you know, unilaterally by a majority vote. Or, you know, after six years, we got to go out to bid again and and have the process that way to provide the ability for other people who want to come in to throw their name in the hat. You know, I yeah, I could really go either way on it.
Okay.
You know, I think there were a lot of people that expressed interest that we might, as a board, want to, you know, consider that. I mean, of course, you know, people are free to to run and get voted in, right? So, you know, it's a there, there, there currently are not term limits for elected members, right?
Correct.
No, some of us are forever.
We'd be long gone.
I'm gonna die soon.
Well, I think, Deacon, if you want, I mean, I think we can just, people can ponder this now that we have a conversation about it and we can revisit it in a shorter version next month as opposed to taking
Well, let's just, let's just talk for a minute, because, because it, it's Well, let's just, let's just talk for a minute. Cause, cause at, at some point, we want to be sending this to Donna for review.
That's true. Okay. I'm, I'm.
In the middle of March, we'll, we'll want to, we'll want to submit this to the, to the select board for the warrant.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. So I didn't, I didn't want to take up too much airtime, but I think that's a great point. Yeah.
I mean, cause there is a, we do need to be mindful of that, of that schedule.
Yeah. So I, I think I got that, Robert, you were, you were okay with us just renewing. And Linda, did you have a sense of what you might prefer?
I'm gonna just.
Yeah, really? But what's, it seems like there's more emphasis. I don't, Deacon, did you have a preference? I didn't ask you.
Um, one thing I think, um, I do think that this business of getting together with the select board is a little unwieldy. And it didn't, I, I, I mean, I, I understand the, the responsibility for getting along with the select board, but it, I, it's, it is a clumsy way to do things.
Michael.
So I, I mean, I thought that it seems to me that the notion that, um, six years is, is, is the right, is a period of time before we go to the select board again. I think that's fine.
Okay.
Well, he- here's a, here's another little variant on that. What about if it just says that, um, any associate member coming on for the first time goes through this joint process, but thereafter, it's a planning board function to, to renew or not.
So you're, you're sort of conceding about the joint appointment on the front end, but then we have renewal power after?
Yeah. So select comes in on the front end, you know, they get to participate then, but thereafter, it's, it's, it's our baby for as long as they're willing to serve and we're, we're willing to renew.
Yeah. I think it would pass muster with them and it definitely makes it manageable on our end. It's only, you know, it's that initial hurdle, but once you pass the hurdle.
Yeah, that's easier. I mean,
I mean, is there, was there a absolute reason that there had to be a joint agreement anyway? I mean.
No, there, no, there's not at all. It's, um, I mean, it's up to the town to decide. So, you know, it's what we would recommend. Um, you know, at the last meetings, I think Steve was the, the advocate for replicating, you know, statute says if there's a vacancy on any committee, that we have to do it together. So Steve was advocating that we just replicate that. And then because I was asked to ask the select board, surprise, surprise, they wanted a voice in the process. Um, so that's sort of how it got there. Uh, but there's no requirement, um, that it happened that way.
I like, I like Jeff's model where we sort of say, okay, well, the first time maybe, um, if they're interested, are they going to be interested every time to do this again? I mean, we've done it, we've done it once, you know, did they just want that initial input and now they're fine with it or? But I, I agree. If, if someone continues on, um, for several election cycles and, and none of us leave, so they stay an associate member. I don't see why they would have to be re, you know, re-agreed upon every cycle.
Yeah, we would be pretty irritated if we had somebody we were comfortable with and the, the select board, um, you know, kind of.
Right. I mean, my concern, what if we like them, but for whatever reason, the select board at the time decides that they don't?
Right. We still have the majority if we.
We can still have, yeah. But, but, but I, I just think get the select board involved upfront, you know, so they're happy with the person. And then, you know, we're the ones that are going to have the experience with that person. So let us make the renewals after that.
Yeah. You know, I just had, Linda just made, think of something that like, I'll, I'll tweak everything we're discussing anyway. But it might be interesting to just write on the front end, that process, I had written in there that the planning board has to notify the select board in 45 days that we're intending to do this associate member thing. So they can schedule accordingly. We could insert there basically saying, asking the select board to tell us if they want to be involved or not. Cause they might be really busy and they could care less.
I think that's a great idea. And furthermore, we should also include language that gives them a limit. For, for acting on it, uh, with the, to form a joint meeting.
Oh, time limit. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I'll do that. Uh, so I think, Deacon, to your point, I'll rewrite this. We can review it briefly next time and then maybe send it off to Donna. So if people have any other thoughts.
I got, I have another thought.
Okay. Shoot. That was quick.
I think, uh, so, you know, the paragraph on associate members may be removed for cause, including extended absence, frequent, you know, um, I think we should, you know, kind of replace that with something along the lines of, uh, you know, the chair can initiate a vote to remove, uh, an associate member at any time for any reason. Uh, no, uh, you know, uh, uh, keep it as, uh, simple and short as possible. Is that, is that too much?
Well, no, I was, I was just thinking out loud. I mean, what's really weird about this is in the extreme, you could have a, a planning board that doesn't have a quorum, which means you can't, you can't act as of, like as a, a body, which gives the chair a lot of power. So if the chair really didn't like that person.
Okay.
They could just sort of initiate getting rid of them. And so it seemed, and for cause means you actually have to have a reason. You know what I mean? As opposed to, I want to get rid of them because they're asking all these questions and I don't want them to ask those annoying questions because they're disagreeing with me.
Oh, I would, I would say it would need a, uh, there would need to be quorum.
Well, we might not have a quorum. That's the thing. That's the challenge. I mean, I doubt it, but that's, that's sort of why this is, we're even discussing it. I mean, I'm hard pressed to think we wouldn't have a quorum, but it's, it's sort of, you, you gotta think in that scenario, which is unusual. Um, so I mean, this, that language is mostly I got from most other towns that they actually have something there about for cause. Um, what I added is that it has to be written in shared and public meeting, um, and a majority re, you know, required if, if it's available. So the fact that you have to write it and state it in public meeting sort of puts a little sunshine on that process.
I guess sunshine is there, yeah.
But, uh, let me, I'll, I'll ponder and see if I, I, I get your point. It's just, uh, in this particular thing, the chair has a lot more power than they usually do. Cause the board might not be able to vote.
Right, right.
So, so Michael, have, have you, uh, have you gotten some of these, um, ideas and notions from other um, aspects of zoning around the state that have passed in, in towns?
Some of them. I mean, there's, I, you know, I looked at them, you know, a, a lot of it is the variation in scope and the selection process. Um, so there's no one, I think one town had elections, everyone else had appointments. And then the appointments range from the chair making the appointment to, um, you know, the joint appointment with the select board. Um, so it sort of varies, but I, you know, that was, and those are all well established and in place in these other towns.
Um, yeah.
So I just sort of, you know, and the language about the participation, you know, there's one town where they can do, they can approve minutes. I mean, they give fu- full voting privileges. They're, they really are a de facto member. And then others are, are more limited, but some of them are not specific. And I think, you know, where Eileen is with this kind of stuff is be a little bit more specific. So if we can figure out the scenarios, we're not scratching our heads in the moment. Um, but yeah, I, I, I looked at all the other ones that I had shared with you and tried to get a sense of if there were themes.
So if, if, if we had a meeting and, um, there were only three full members present, plus an alternate or two.
Right.
The, the, the chair, um, could, could call the alternate in for the purposes of that meeting to make a quorum.
Correct.
And to vote on, on minutes because for that night they would be.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that they would be a full voting member. And, you know, the next meeting, they might go back to the, the, the previous status because
Exactly.
they don't need to serve.
Yeah. And so in that case, you know, getting back to Deacon's point, you know, he would basically designate that meeting. He'd say, um, you know, since we don't have a quorum, I'm officially designating these two people to participate as full members for the duration of this meeting. Um, you know, and that would be the time factor as opposed to the purpose factor.
Yeah. So while I'm thinking of it, Tessa, just for the zoning board of appeals purposes, I'm, I'm trying to fi- I'm trying to figure out a, a, a tactful way to talk to Donna about the different interpretation of this. So just, just leave it, leave it to me if, if, if you're asked about it. Cause
Okay.
she's a lawyer and I'm not. And I think I got it right. So I gotta figure out a, a, a nice way to say that.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to bring it up because I, uh, the concern, yeah, about how they're treated. It does make sense. I mean, you need members to be able to come in unexpectedly, but.
Yeah. I mean, i- i- in a nutshell, in, in Massachusetts, we're a home new state. So unless the statute says you can't do something, you can do it. You have all the powers to make these kinds of decisions and use your associates as you see fit, unless the statute limits it. And there is nothing in statute that limits it. And unless there's a court case out there somewhere, which I don't think there is, then you can do it.
So, thank you.
So Deacon, if we're shifting gears, can I ask a, a, a question?
Well, I wasn't sure we were wrapped up on.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're getting there, Deacon. We're getting there.
We're, we're closing in, I know, but I wa- I wasn't sure we're entirely done. I mean.
I can screen share, uh, Michael's latest email if that would help see the.
Oh, in terms, oh, in terms of how, I think we got to the decision. Um, I think Jeff conceded that, you know, he's okay. We, we're going to ask the select board if they want to be involved. And if they say yes, for the initial appointment, we'll do a joint process and then subsequent rules will just be in the planning board. So I think we don't need that third one.
Okay. So, so, so are you satisfied, Michael, that, that, that you're ready to write another draft for, for next month?
Yeah. I think I got enough. And I would just say, you know, if people have time to look it over, if there's anything else that pops out, that's, you know, you want to let me know about. But I think those are the big things. Everything, you know, like the three years, I think we agreed, that's easy enough.
I mean, it would really be nice if we could, if we could leave the, the February meeting with a draft that we were happy with.
Agreed.
I think we're very close. I mean, and, I mean, I think that should, should that, should that wish not be true, um, it'd be tight, but we'd still have time to finish it at the March meeting and get it to Donna before we needed to turn it into the select board, but, which would be less than ideal, but.
Okay. Well, I'll definitely work on it in the interim and send it out shortly.
Okay. So, so we're done with this section and we can, we can move on. Everybody, everybody happy? So, uh, I, I got an email from, um, a woman at the, at the FERCog, um, looking, uh, for the planning board to answer queries, uh, having to do with the creation of the open space and recreation plan. I did not want to answer this myself. I thought we ought to, we ought to, um, we ought to discuss it as the board. Um, they have four questions. The first one is, has the planning board found that the lack of town sewer and water limits infill or other kinds of growth in the town center district and to what degree? They ask about the building, the build-out analysis of the 2000, from 2004 and what we think about it now. How does the, uh, five prospective solar developments, um, play into the OSRP? And the fourth question has to do with the, uh, with the junkyard.
Wow. So, so that's coming from FERCog. And, and those are, those are not general questions. They're tailored questions.
That's right. That's right. I'm sorry?
I think it's because when we did, um, the grant for, um, the MVP grant, we got, uh, maybe this is not it. There's some money for redoing the open space plan because it was out of date. And I think FERCog has got the contract to do that. So that's probably where it's coming from.
Yeah, yeah. Um, um, the, um, I don't think they're in a hurry. I'd, um,
Those are big questions.
Well, we should answer, but we should, we, we should at some point, not necessarily tonight, come up with, come up with answers to these questions. Uh,
Did we all get that email, Deacon?
I don't think so. No.
I can screen share it right now.
Well, that'd be great. Perfect. It was sent to Tessa and me.
Okay.
Well, it went to, it went to planning too.
Oh, it did? Okay. So we did get it.
Yeah.
So it's showing the right one screen?
Yeah.
You're cutting off the right margin.
Can I expand it? Does that, does that help?
Yep.
Um, a little more. I might be on, uh, your screen, Deacon. Oh, well, that was, that was an improvement. I mean.
Here, read it. That's, that works.
Yeah.
It's, it seems like on the face of it, four is sort of straightforward. Um, we might not know the answer, but it's an easier, like one could figure that out. Three, I wouldn't want to touch at this point because it seems like that's just politically untenable to answer. I'm not sure about, one and two seem like those are more opinions, correct?
I don't know. My, my take too is that build out analysis is pretty, it's a pretty weak, pretty weak kind of thing.
Who would figure that out? Cause you guys did it last time. Someone did it for us, right?
Well, the, well, the, the one they're referring to was done in oh, four and, and simply took the existing zoning and made a calculation of how much, um, how much more building could happen. But I don't know. That's, uh, it was.
Kind of predict, that's a kind of prediction that I'm very distrustful of.
Yeah, it was a GIS build out, which is, which is, um, not the most accurate way to do it because you have to make a lot of, uh, assumptions and, uh,
Yeah.
guesses and you don't really know the properties that well. But you know, you take the amount of land and you subtract some reasonable amount that you think can't be developed because it's wet or, or steep or whatever. Then you divide by your zoning.
Yeah.
Or, or some other number that's.
Yeah.
Um, you know, like you divide by two or three or something, which is our acreage back then. And, you know, then you get some rough number. And it's, it's usually more than, it's usually higher than what is reasonably ever going to be built.
Well, and I think designed to be higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sort of torn. On the one hand, I don't want to be uncooperative because it's, you know, Penny and Gail on behalf of the town sort of working to up, update the plan. On the other hand, I don't want us to sort of rush to answer a question that might actually require some thoughtfulness.
Well, I certainly didn't.
Well, Mr. Chairman, would, um, would you think that, that, that maybe you as the chair would, 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 you know, would, you know, think about potential answers to these questions and then review them with the rest of us the next time?
That'd be fine. I'm happy, I'll do that.
And then, you know, nothing will go out until we all agree on it.
Yeah.
At least you will have thought about it and put something down on paper.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Great, thank you, Deacon.
Yeah.
All right. So before we move on, I was thinking, since we have Miriam and Henry sort of hanging out here, can we do the historical commission thing next?
Sure. Sure.
So I think that was my request. So let's say we're in January. So I think it was November where we had the presentation from the historic commission, basically saying that they were looking to figure out how to work with us more closely, especially in light that we're going to have special permits that coming down the pike. And, you know, our solar bylaw involves some issues. So I know from talking to Miriam, but I think they mentioned it in the November thing that they were looking to establish some relationships with consultants. And there's two consultants that, you know, they can speak to. But one, I think, is going to be doing some mapping. And then the other is a deputy tipple for the Wapenoigs, Martha's Vineyard. And I guess what I wanted, just generally sort of, we never followed up and had a conversation about, hey, this commission said that they wanted to have a closer relationship with us. So what do we think about that? I think that's a general conversation. But I think more specifically, I'm thinking it would be good to have just an initial conversation to say if the historical commission has been doing legwork in the anticipation that they want to have expertise ready to go so that if we have special permits coming in, you know, getting back to like what Evan Turner said, where he said, how do we reach out to the Native American community? And we said, go ask the community. That they're already, the historical commission is already building some bridges. And, you know, that they're doing our legwork or helping us do legwork. So, I mean, my personal sense is it'd be nice to sort of create some clear understanding amongst ourselves and hopefully with the Stark Commission about how we might want to work with them, you know, so that it can be beneficial. So we're not sort of starting flat-footed when we get a special permit. That was my hope is just to sort of, because I'm appreciating knowing that they're doing this stuff, knowing that we might be covering some ground, you know, eventually on these issues. So that was where I brought it up. So I don't know if we want to turn it over to Henry or Miriam, if people want to have questions or comments before we do that.
Fine with turning it over to Henry and Miriam.
Henry, you want to go?
Speak.
One of you go.
One of you is me.
Somebody.
Go, Miriam, go.
Henry, you want to?
I was muted. Well, as Michael very eloquently noted, we've been doing some work, legwork, getting some of these people lined up. When the time comes, there should be some information, data, et cetera. Hasn't been easy, but, you know, what can I say? But, yeah, I guess we never heard back. I assume that people will be interested in the data. I'm open to hearing from you.
Miriam, can you just, because you've been, just give us a rundown on who you've been talking to? Because I think that's helpful.
Yeah, so we've been doing a lot of talking with different people. And, you know, we're still in the process of trying to work out some contract stuff, which is just endlessly complicated. So I don't want to, like, you know, say we're contracting with somebody when we may not end up being able to contract with someone. But we are trying to, we really kind of, we're going at it at two different angles. One was that we were consulting with an anthropologist who has mapping expertise and has been a researcher, a field researcher. She worked for Nolombeeka and she is a member of the Northfield Historical Commission. She's kind of taken a leadership role kind of in the region, in the Northeast, around helping tribal authorities connect with historical commissions. She was one of the co-directors of a few conferences that were put on for historical commissions and tribal authorities in the last few years. And she has a lot of different skills. And so one of the things that she has available is the capacity to map data. And that's where the ArcGIS came in to play because, you know, she creates maps for us. If we have her do that, it would be really helpful for us to be able to kind of own the data files and have the software to look at them and to generate different kinds of reports and stuff. So that's why we were talking about the ArcGIS software. So our hope is that, you know, when the special permit applications come in, we'll be able to be prepared to submit a written report to the planning board fairly quickly so that you'll know what our concerns are and what our recommendations are. One of the things that, and we are also trying to establish some relationships with tribal authorities. As Henry mentioned, we've been talking with some tippos. Maybe it was Michael that mentioned that. We've reached out to more than one tribal entity. So it may not be that we only have one relationship. We may have multiple relationships with the idea that if we have data, they may be able to look at that data and give us some guidance about what recommendations we might want to make. One thing that came up that I guess I would just bring to the planning board is that in talking with the mapper consultant, she said it would be really helpful if we were able to, at the onset, early in the game, get access to the developer, the engineering firm's ArcGIS map overlays for the project boundaries so that we could take a look at how that compares with other mapped data in the area. The problem with kind of the printed maps that are prepared is that you don't necessarily make it easy to then situate the the effect, what do they call it, APE, onto, you know, GIS mapping. So if we were able to have those data files, we could import them into mapping software and be able to generate better maps for the planning board to look at. Our hope is that, you know, we would have some data to share with the planning board, including maps and more detailed data. Not, so that's sort of an ask that we have.
Is that something that our bylaw now requires be submitted to us in the application?
I don't know if it's in, I don't think it's in the bylaw. So I guess it would be a, it would be an ask. And I don't know if it's something you can mandate. So I doubt that you can mandate it. Maybe you could.
It'd make us happy. Right?
I mean, I know from my own experience.
I don't say anything about, you know, submitting electronic copies of the application materials because that would include all the maps.
I know. I know my own experience sitting in on the Anrad hearings is that sometimes it's a little frustrating when you just have kind of a snippet, sort of a snapshot of an area without the surrounding contextual habitat and topography. And I know that, you know, looking back on the wheel track, you know, that kind of larger contextual information wasn't always there with the map. So it would be helpful.
Robert, a question. Just to more fully understand the maps, is the historical commission striving to have maps which town-wide might reflect areas of Native American settlement or interest that should be preserved? Is there some archaeological approach to that?
The idea was the maps might show a number of natural features as well as stone structure features that might be Native American, but also might be colonial. So I don't think we're narrowly defining this as only Native American. So I would say features of either historical or cultural significance.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, in answer to your question, I'm just looking at the required document section. And it doesn't say anything explicit about maps. There's a site plan, there's locations of wetlands, national historic districts, Native American locations, blueprints and drawings, general documentation, which is some stuff. So I think it would be a separate ask because it's not among the list of required documents.
Well, so nowhere in there, it says electronic files of, you know, some boards require that all the application materials be submitted electronically as well as in paper form.
I don't think we have it in here. I can check, but I don't get, I don't think we got that specific.
I think that, you know, based on what the requirements are for submitting documents, you know, any kind of map or plans could be submitted in the form of like a PDF document or something and would not necessarily be in the format that Miriam is referring to.
Yeah.
You know, the developer may have, you know, this GIS program or some other GIS program that they use. And, you know, they may be, may not be willing to share that, you know, that format. It's likely they would be unwilling to share it depending on what kind of stuff they have on there. But.
The other alternative would be if they're not going to, if they aren't willing to share the data, though those, I mean, they use those kind of maps for civil engineering. So chances are there, whoever's doing the civil engineering piece of it would have that, those kind of maps is usually what they use. But the other alternative is if they provided maps that really, you know, sometimes what you see is this kind of large, kind of sort of vaguely, you know, kind of zoomed out sort of parcel. And then there's like a little square to show where the project is. And it's really, really hard to kind of match that up with a topography map. So if they were able to provide some map that showed the project's boundaries within the larger parcel so that somebody doing mapping could align that, recreate it.
I think it might be good if the historical commission ends up, you know, getting a license for a GIS software package or something like that and/or finalizing some of these contracts. If you're able to put together kind of a package that can be given to the submitter of a special permit application, say, hey, you know, by the way, you know, we use this GIS system. Would you be able to provide a map of the proposed project area and any of the following file formats? And if not, would you be able to provide a set of parameters so that, you know, if you give this list of parameters, you know, you're able to go and plug those into your system and essentially draw where the, you know, something that would, you know, if they don't have the file format, they can give you something where you can essentially mock it up in your system, right? I mean, so basically, I think, or something that maybe your consultant would be able to do. You know, so having, you know, like, you know, more about like a technical write-up of, you know, what your request would be might be helpful.
One thing that makes me think of, you know, in terms of.
I'm going to just respond. We can certainly do that, Nathan. I guess we'll have to see what they provide in their, in the application. You know, maybe that they'll provide maps that will be sufficient and we won't need to do that.
The thing I was going to say, getting back to sort of the relationship, because Nathan, your comment makes me think of it is, you know, this didn't happen last time, but I think it would be for the planning board to sort of be the backup for the historic commission. So if what happened, what you just recommended, if the planning board were able to say to the applicant, you know, we want to make sure that the historical commission can give us the data that we need to make a good evaluation. So please work with them so that they can, you know, make this evaluation. Then it's not just the historical commission going to them because the historical commission has no power over the decision. But if the planning board are saying, please work with this other town committee so they can give us good data, it sort of gives some important backup to the historical mission. It says, we want the applicant to work with this commission so that we can get the data that we need. So I think that's the relationship I could imagine in that scenario.
That might be the best we can do. And then, you know, the applicant either obliges us or runs the risk of earning our disfavor.
I mean, the downside, if they don't do that, then it may put the planning board in a position where we provide some maps with some data and you're not able to figure out, well, does that data fall within the affected area or not in the affected area? Because we weren't able to get that specific about where the boundaries of the project are.
Also, I think, given the experience with the inaccuracy of maps that have been provided in the past, I think it behooves us to at least have a check on that as well. I think you would agree about the initial maps that we got. Wrong names of.
They were talking about the subdivision things.
Yes. So we'd check on that.
The other thing, I'm sorry, go ahead, Henry.
No, no, no.
The other thing I was just going to think about that I know, you know, Miriam, when you're talking about the contracts, my sense is the historical commission has some budget. I don't know how much it is. But, you know, the nice thing with the planning board is that, you know, if we deem that we needed to get information from and hire consultants that we can, you know, hire consultants at the expense of the developer. And so, you know, one thing that I was thinking was, when you settle on people that you've vetted, if there's additional work that, you know, exceeds the budget of the historical commission, but the planning board still thinks it's important that, you know, we could basically pick up that contractual relationship and, you know, and it's, they've already been pre-vetted and they're already gotten some initial information. So if we need to extend it, that might be something we'd be willing to do. So I think there's a benefit, you know, because I know if you were to say, go out and find someone to do mapping of this historical stuff, we'd be starting from square one where you already have done that stuff. So when we get there, it seems like if we want to get more extensive information, we can just hire them on the developer's dime. You know, it's just as an option. I don't think we are presuming that we would have to.
And just as a bit of reassurance, I think the historical commission has really vetted the kind of people we were working with. They are, I think, the most qualified people in the region. Lots of folks that could have gone on with this. And I think we've picked the right people.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it's nine o'clock. What are we doing?
Okay, I think we should try to, I do think that we should talk about the AMP meeting that took place, the Zoom meeting with AMP that took place. I did not go. I felt like I was very uncomfortable going to a meeting that was not public with a prospective developer. So.
Yeah, do you know there was, it was discussed at the select board meeting last week, Deacon?
I made aware of that, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, the one thing with that, I mean, Jeff and Nathan and I were at the select board meeting. The thing that jumped out at me that, you know, I made a point of and we discussed briefly, but. The thing that jumped out at me that, you know, I made a point of and we discussed briefly, but it seems like the whole planning board should just be aware is that, you know, what Evan Turner basically pitched to the, at that meeting was that they have to make a commitment to National Grid by March, whether National Grid's going to upgrade the substation. I think it's like 12 million bucks. So the way Kevin, the assessor framed it was the town was asked to get a sense of the town, um, which was, was concerning to me because there's no real process for getting a sense of the town. You know, you know, the select board, I think we came around to the select board realizing they're not in a position of saying, you know, anything about a project because they're not the body that hears the project. And we, we can't say anything until we make a determination and it's only one project at a time. Um, and Becky surely can't, uh, but the concern was they, they wanted to say, basically they wanted someone to say, we're in support of this, so go invest your money. And that just seemed very premature and not following the process. So, um, I think there was agreement that the process has to be followed, but that was the one thing that got reported out that I found really concerning.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know. I, the, the more I thought about that meeting, the, the, I, I just did not like the non-public aspect of it. I, I,
I didn't. Kudos to you.
Well, we'll see. But I, I don't know. I mean, it seems to me that they can, they can do whatever they want with, with the utility at their own risk. I mean,
Don't worry, Deacon. Your, your presence was not missed. Um, Kevin, who's been a member of the planning board, dispensed loaning advice.
Yes, I saw. Well, yes, well, he's more qualified than I am.
Hopefully they don't take it.
Yeah.
Or it should be, I don't know if it's been sent out already, but a report of the meeting was going to be shared.
Yeah, we didn't get it yet.
Okay.
Didn't they also say that, uh, they were expecting to approve a permit a month?
Well, they also said in the past that they were gonna, that we were going to have an application before us in December.
Tessa, can I ask you a question? I was just looking at the agenda for the CONCOM. Is the PCR West has been continued?
So West is the one that we're just looking at the legend for. It, it's at its, it's, it's, we're going to be issuing the ORAD, ORAD, I expect. Because that's just, we, it would, because we almost had it completed last meeting.
That's my thought.
The Montague Carver will just be continued because it's, we don't have revisions.
Does it say that on the agenda, it said both of them are being continued? So I was a little confused about that.
The Montague Carver, they're, they're continued because Montague Carver started way back when.
Okay.
So has the, has the, uh, are they, what's the CONCOM done so far with an ANRAD? The one at, at Leverett and Montague.
Not, those have not issued an ORAD. So at this point of the six submissions, there's been only one ORAD, ORAD, um, submitted.
Tell me what ORAD is.
That's the permit that goes, um, in response to the wetland delineation. So that's confirming the wetland boundaries. It does not have anything to do with solar. It is just about mapping.
What, what are the, what's the acronym?
Brief, so it's an ANRAD is an abbreviated notification of an, abbreviated notification of delineation, then the ORAD is the order of, of delineation.
But that's a necessary first step.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and my, our understanding from Turner, I believe, he's mentioning in front of the CONCOM and maybe at the planning board in that November meeting is that they're not planning on coming back to the CONCOM for all the projects because they're going to try and avoid the wetlands. So some of them will see notice of intent, there's, but not all of them. Likely. So some of them might after the ORAD get, avoid the wetlands and.
And the one, the one we've completed is PCR West, right? Or is, I get them.
Back corner east.
Which is the one that's near the wheel attract.
Correct.
Yes. That one has completed the ORAD.
So when they do an, an NOI, which is related to wetlands, that's, that's simultaneous, parallel track to a special permit.
Well, that's what they did the last time, but they're not going to do it this time because they already went through the ANRAD process. So, so if they go through the ANRAD process and the wetland delineations are, are agreed upon, then there is no NOI before the CONCOM later.
Okay, so then it just comes straight to us.
Comes straight to you.
Are you sure about that, Miriam? Because I would think that there is a project, I mean, if they're not avoiding wetlands, I, I would think that.
They'll, they'll avoid the wetland. I mean,
If they avoid the wetlands and they don't have to come back in front of the conservation commission, but if they are working in the wetlands, then they do have to come back in front.
Yeah, that's true. If they, if they're, for some reason they decide they want, but, um,
Because one of them has to cross the stream, um, and will be coming in, back in front of the CONCOM.
Right, right, that one.
Yeah.
So there's a stream crossing, that's true. But for the others, this was the only bite at the apple was the ANRAD process.
So Deacon, this sort of morphs a little bit, I think, into one of the other agenda items, but, um, when we, when they submit, whenever that might be, is this agenda item, the electronic special permit filings that you anticipating that they're gonna electronically file and then you let us all know or like how you?
Well, I had conversation with Tessa and she was saying to me, and I may not have understood entirely correctly, that we were, we were going to talk about what we were going to require.
Oh, that's what you and I talked about, Tessa.
Yeah. Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Um, yeah, so just to not be vague for the rest of the board, um, what I brought up to Michael and Deacon, was the idea of asking applicants not as a replacement for the physical copy, but some additional to the sub, uh, physical copy, asking them to submit electronic copy as is done for the zoning board and the CONCOM so, so that things can be put up on the website for the public to look at.
And we can look at without going into the town hall.
Yes, yeah. So this is something, I mean, I just got hired on in September, but my understanding is that this is a pretty new thing to, that was, is being asked of applicants, not, it seems like it's not in the bylaws, but so far we haven't had any resistance from applicants about sending PDFs. So.
Well, I think that, um, we should, um, Jeff asked about, about the time and closing and he's now departed from my screen.
He's cooking dinner.
Me too, me too. I think we should think about wrapping. And, and, oh, he likes what I'm saying.
Jeff, you're muted.
Okay, but.
I do my dishes, I'm listening.
Yeah, but I think we should move toward wrapping up.
Well, I just, before we do, I just wanted to say on this topic, it seems like it would be helpful to Tessa to have a sense of what we want so that if they're filing, which can be, you know, at any point, that we make sure that we say we do want electronic versions, because what would be really helpful, I think for all of us is to be able to look at this stuff and get the documentation electronically. Otherwise, we have to go into town hall. So if we know that that's what we want, we can instruct Tessa to let them know.
Oh, I, I'm good with that. I mean,
You know, we could, we could also, um, make a change to our special permit application form and place a requirement for electronic filing upon it. And once that change is put into effect, we, we do that just as a planning board with no, you know, it's not as only by law, we just do it by regulation.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, we, we could do it that simply. I mean, just, um, and I, I, I think, I, I think Tessa must have electronic copies. I know I do of all the application forms.
I do too.
It, it could just be added and then we could, um, we could vote on it at the next meeting and then it would be in effect.
Couldn't we do it now? We just authorize it and then we can change the form. So it's, it's easier that way.
Yeah, does anybody have the form? Does it, um, is there a place to, to do that?
Let's just go, let's just, I'll go to the website and we'll see.
I can't believe it. I've extended the meeting.
Hey, you wanted to leave.
But it's a brilliant idea.
Those dishes got soaked, Jeff.
Okay, special permit application, is that what we want?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be planning boards, but yeah, there's, there's only board one and a planning board one.
Yeah, here, let me go and I'll share it with everybody. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yeah. So, all right.
There's also a checklist.
Yeah, ho- hold on, um, so I would suggest, let, let, let's see, I, I go down to the bottom.
The bottom, okay.
And it says.
Oh, here, six copies, right.
Yeah, and then somewhere in there, um, say, you could, you could put six copies plus, plus, uh, one electronic, um, uh, copy filed with town clerk. Something like that. You could, you could add it that way.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And, um, so I, you know, somebody want to get in there and format that and?
Yeah, well, here, let's make a motion and then we can just do it. I'll move.
I guess my only question, uh, comment on that would be whether it made sense to have the e- email be for me or for the Grace, the town, as town clerk. I mean, I know that, uh, special permits do get have to be go through town clerk, um, but I guess I think we should check with Grace about that or like that, if that's,
We could.
They're going to be going through her first.
You see how the third one down says notice the planning board? So I think if, I would support you getting it directly. So we could say six copies filed with town clerk, because that's the official filing, right? Going to the town clerk is the official filing, so it won't be confused. And one, one complete electronic copy, um, submitted to the land clerk.
Yeah, but Michael, don't get confused because this is the town hall official use.
Oh, oh, yeah, you're right. Here, so let's go up to top.
Well,
you opened up a can of worms trying to edit a form, Jeff.
Well, um,
I'm going to look, I'm going to just see on the, uh,
Yeah, but, but that last box tells them what, you know, what they, I mean, that's where you, um, that's where they find out they have to submit six.
Well, now here, there's this. Can you see this?
Yeah.
So this is the special permit checklist, which is also on the website.
For me, that checklist is, is a lot more useful for me than an applicant.
Okay, I take it back then.
Yeah.
Go back to the other one.
Yeah, I, I would get it right on the application fee. So it's, it's clear that they have to look through that and fill, fill out all the boxes and, and, you know, they have to read it and know that it applies.
Okay, I'm getting it back up in a second. My apologies.
I mean, you could even just say both town clerk and planning board at shoesbury.org. If you're sending it to one place, it's probably pretty easy to send it to both.
You could, you know, you could.
I'm going into town hall tomorrow. I can ask Grace tomorrow.
Well, why don't we just do this? Why don't we just, I mean, I, I'm fine with saying a motion that basically gets the sentiment and then you guys can figure out how to make the form. Which, if, you know, you want, Deacon, you want me to try to make a motion?
Please, please, go ahead.
I'll move that, um, the planning board requires that a full electronic copy, um, of any special permit be submitted to the, um, town, preferably the land clerk in order to complete any special permit application. How'd that sound? And you'll have to read it back to Jeff because you missed the brilliance of that.
You want to read it back what I, wait, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion for the planning board, um, to requir, or what was that you said?
Require.
Require, I was like wrong. Not request, uh, require a full electronic copy of any special permit be submitted to the town, preferably to land use clerk, to complete any special permit application.
Gosh.
Yeah, um, Murphy here. Uh, my only concern is, is that with language to complete an application, you have to submit all this stuff electronically. That, that seems false. For instance, i- if they do submit the stuff to the town clerk, uh, hard copy, six copies, and, uh, I think at that point, whether or not they submit electronic stuff or not, we're on the hook to open a public, uh, hearing within what, 45 days or whatever it is, uh, per, uh, the state law. So putting in a requirement in the language on our form for this, I, I don't know, I mean, we could do it, but if we considered an application incomplete, uh, and then didn't open a public hearing because we didn't have electronic copies of things, I don't know if that would stand. And I don't know if we care or not, but I just wanted to make that concern.
It's a good point. I mean, just looking at this form, I mean, it, we're expecting six copies, but real, it really, it only requires one to the town clerk, I think, to be submitted. So it's, it's that same level of expectation. Um, you know, we're probably on the hook anyway. But I think your point's a good one. I don't know how to change the language.
You should just, instead of, you know, to complete an application, we just should just say that.
With any application.
You know, electronic, uh, copies of all, uh, of the form and all, uh, attached materials should be submitted to land use clerk at, you know, whatever the email address is.
And just strike the complete in order to have a complete.
Yeah, that, that's, that sounds good.
Shall, shall be submitted.
Yeah.
There you go, yeah.
Like that.
You know, there, there are certain thresholds to begin the process. And, and they're fairly minimal, but if, uh, if applications are incomplete, you can go through the process and have the hearing. And if, if the stuff doesn't come in, you can deny it for that reason. I mean, it's, it'll, it'll go through the process, but it'll be denied for incompleteness.
Sort of like the subdivision. We had a hearing and then we rejected it.
Right, right. You know, they, they had enough stuff there to where we had to go forward with it, but, you know, we just, yeah, you're right. So where are we at here with this?
Have to vote.
Motion in a second. So Tessa, I seconded, Michael made the motion, I seconded. Uh, have we changed the motion now to something else or?
Well, we just struck out that last few words about the, to be complete.
Okay.
And added the shall to strengthen it.
Okay. So Tessa, could you read it quickly?
Yeah, I was gonna, I wasn't sure exactly where the shell should land. So the.
The front, the middle and the end.
The planning board shall require a full electronic copy of any special permit be submitted to the town, preferably to land, to the land use clerk.
I think that's sufficient for enabling you to change the form.
Read it one more time, please.
Yep. The planning board shall require a full electronic copy of any special permit be submitted to the town, preferably to the land use clerk.
And, and, and where does that go on this form someplace? It is, where are we putting that?
I think we're going to leave it to, um, Grace and Tessa to figure out how to get it on a forum so it's expected. Um, it could, we could put it on the website too. As, you know, as, next to the, the little form thing. But I think.
I would put it on the website, as far as on the form, my suggestion would be right above the signature lines, you know, u- underneath the justification for special permit, uh, you know, attached additional materials is necessary. Just, you know, put that little, you know, you know, submit everything electronically to town use clerk at this email address, right above the signature line. Because, you know, everyone, people are going to read, uh, that little blurb, uh, right above where they're signing.
Yeah. It, it does seem a little odd to me that, that the electronic version is filed differently from, from the non-electronic. I mean, we've always, I mean, the town clerk is the keeper of stuff. I mean, I mean, the town clerk is not going to have any reservation about sharing with the land use clerk. I just, I just-
Yeah, I mean, we could strike that part of the motion.
We did, well, she doesn't designate the town clerk, then, I think, just to be clear, so it's not vague.
Yeah, because-
Because last year, we had this issue about what's, what's submitted. Does it go to Deacon, or goes to town clerk, and we had to go through all this clarification, that it has to go to the town clerk.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think, I think that's accurate, or a good, a good call.
You want to read it with that change, for one, for one good measure?
So are we changing it to town clerk?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, preferably just town clerk.
Okay. The planning board shall require full, a full electronic copy of any special permit be submitted to the town, or to the town clerk.
Short and sweet.
Maybe put in, uh, the special permit and additional materials.
Okay.
Okay, so, so do we want to read, read the motion as it now reads, and then, and then vote, are, are we ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The planning board shall require a full electronic copy of any special permit and additional materials be submitted to the town clerk.
Cool.
Okay, so I'll call the roll, we ready? Jeff?
He's muted. Jeff, you're muted. All right, thumbs up.
Okay, Nathan?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Uh, I don't see Robert.
Hi.
Okay. Did I miss anyb- I, did I miss anybody? Sorry.
Hi.
Okay, good. Not everybody shows on the screen. Okay, uh, this is good, can-
Motion to adjourn?
I would entertain that.
We'll move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
To consensus. It's unanimous, good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Paul.
Night.
Bye.